It's August 30th, 2022, and 10:00 AM I hereby call to meet the St. County Board of Supervisors to order, and please join us if you would like to in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one addition for today's agenda, and that's going to be on item nine, Consent Agenda, Personnel Action in Empire, file hack at JCK affected 8/31/22 in the Sheriff's Office, 1927/85 weekly, so I would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda with that addition.
Salute.
Second.
Moved to the seconded. All in favor, or excuse me, Hens?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
An aye. We approve. Next is public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. So if you're in the room and have something you would like to say, please come forward and sit at the table here, or if you're on Zoom, you can unmute yourself and phone, I think it's *9. So is there anybody who would like to make a public comment? I have an open public comment session. See, nobody else. Close public comment. We'll go on to consideration of a proclamation recognized in September 2022 as National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in St. County. Supervisor Faisal, would you like to read the first three parts of that, the first three whereas is?
Sure. Proclamation recognizing National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, September 2022. Whereas September is known globally as Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month, the goal is to start the conversation about mental health and the impact of suicide to help de-stigmatize the conversation and help connect people with the appropriate support services, and whereas according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, AFSP, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34 in the U.S., and whereas more than 48,000 people died by suicide across the United States in each year with an average of 132 suicides completed daily, and
whereas each and every suicide directly impacts a minimum of 100 additional people, including family, friends, coworkers, neighbors, and community members, and whereas St. County publicly places its full support behind those who work in the fields of mental health, education, and law enforcement, and
whereas our local mental health experts serve on the front lines of a war that many still refuse to discuss, a stigma regarding suicide and mental health issues is far too prevalent, and now therefore be it resolved that we, the St. County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as National Suicide Awareness and Prevention Month in St. County and encourage all residents to take the time to understand the importance of mental health education and recognize that taking care of ourselves and others includes taking care of mental health.
I move the resolution.
Second.
Proclamation, excuse me.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation. Supervisor Faisal?
Aye.
Supervisor Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We have approved the proclamation, and thank you for the votes who submitted that. Very good to increase awareness of that issue. Next, we have consideration of minutes of the August 23 meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
I move approval of minutes of August 23rd, 2022, as presented.
Been moved and seconded. Faisal?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I answered for you.
That's okay.
Hens, I'm working, aye. Consider, I'm getting ahead of myself. Consideration of claims?
I move approval of these September 1st, 2022 claims as presented.
Second.
Hens?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are approved. Next, we're going to consent agenda, and we have the addition on there, the one higher Sheriff's Office. Are there any, do you want to pull anything from consent or consideration?
I don't have anything to pull.
Supervisor Faisal, then entertain a motion for approval of consent.
I move approval of consent.
Second.
Faisal?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda is approved. We'll go on to ten, a public hearing item. Let me remember to open the public hearing. I wish we get a good morning.
Good morning.
We're having a public hearing to amend the FY23 budget today. The proposed amendment was published in all three newspapers on August 18th as required by law. The proposed amendment has been lowered from the publication by $68,000, which I noted in your documentation. We didn't need to amend two items into conservation as they are already included in the FY23 budget. So as opposed to doubling them up, we went ahead and just lowered the, I'm lowering what I'm presenting to you from what I published. After amendments, the general fund has a projected 35% ending fund balance that, which was budgeted at 32% when we originally set the budget. So are there any questions on the amendment?
Any questions?
No question, just my comments. I fixed the notation that most of the reason for this is due to the carryover.
The ARPA funds?
And the ARPA funds.
Correct. Projects and ARPA funds is what got carried over and amended into the budget.
Any other questions? None. I will open the public hearing. Are there any comments from members of the public? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing, entertain a motion for approval of resolution 23-13, amending the FY23 budget. Salute.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other further discussion? Not Hens?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Okay, then we'll go on to additional items, and we're still with.
Well, now that you amended the budget, thank you very much, we need to appropriate those dollars. So resolution 2314 amends the original appropriations for the departments. They're self-explanatory, but you want me to go through them, I will.
Any questions?
No, I would move approval of resolution 23-14.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution 2314. Faisal?
Aye.
Hens?
Merkin, aye. It is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now we'll go on to discussion, consideration, emergency notification policy for safety and alert protocols for St. County. IT Director Barbara Sternberg. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. So I want to give you a little history on the policy. We've been working on this for a long time and felt the need for it. Originally, it started out to be a paging policy, and I asked for volunteers. We put together a group which consisted of Erin from HSC, Micah, Joby, Stephanie, and Mary Lynn, and as we got to talking about it and working through the different processes, we thought it would be better known as the emergency notification policy. And this is simply a framework, and I considered a bridge between paging, alerting, and the emergency action plan, which we all used to know as the red book. So there's not a lot of detail in here, but it tells you where to go and what to look at. And we wanted it to be brief. In an emergency, you're not always thinking correctly or thinking straight, so we wanted, we went back and forth on, you know, what the notification should be, who should do it. We felt like if it was too formalized, the word wouldn't get out in the event of emergency. So this is what we came up with, and the group has all signed off on it, so we're bringing it to the board to get your input. And also, this is something that Stephanie is going to be presenting at Safety Day later next month, which is two days away.
This stuff be incorporated into our red, or red book, or our general employee policy? What I'm just, where are people gonna see?
It will be in the general policy book, but also referenced in the red book.
Okay.
Emergency notification book.
I think it'd be good, it's just two pages. I think it'd be good, everybody just make a copy and put it in front of the red book, because I think it'd be good to have in there, rather than have to go for a second place when there's an emergency.
Sure, and there are three, there are three hardwired paging stations in the biggest buildings that we have, HSC, Justice Center here. We thought we'd put a copy of this where the amplifier is in each of those buildings.
Sure.
You know, maybe you wouldn't have time to read it in an emergency, but if you wanted a refresher or wanted to look at or know that there's bad weather coming, take a peek and just see what you should do.
I like it. It's brief and to the point, and that's what you need for an emergency.
Exactly.
Any questions? Supervisor Faisal? Question?
Thank you. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, everybody, for your good work, and I would entertain a motion for approval of the emergency notification policy for safety and alert protocols. Salute.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Then go on.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you very much. We go on to Darren Moon, our engineer. Discussion and consideration of Rimmel, Iowa DOT for incident management temporary detour routes. Good morning.
Good morning. This is fairly straightforward. It's actually something we've been working with the DOT on for probably five or 10 years, and it's finally gotten to the point, they're putting it in writing. What it is, it's emergency planning for the interstate. If there was an incident on the interstate which required traffic to be detoured, they want to have some documents in place that state troopers can just flip to, closures in this period of the interstate, so here's the route we're gonna use. We've got all the routes established. That was a coordinated effort. The biggest issue right now for us was the bridges we have in the county on our county highways on some of these detours. There's one in particular on E15, 80,000 pounds is the standard legal truck load. They want them rated all the way up to 156,000 pounds, which is almost twice that amount. That's a special permit load. Probably a lot of those going down the interstate, and so they want to make sure if they detoured, they'd be okay on our bridges. So we did get that bridge rated last week, and it did rate okay. It could, could have gone either way. It's kind of on the limit, but, so the biggest thing is if that bridge deteriorates more and falls below that 156,000, we'll have to let the DOT know so they can change the detour route and not use that in the future. But other than that, it's pretty standard, and these are routes that traffic's gonna use regardless, but this is just a more coordinated effort. They're gonna use those roads if the interstate shut down, so this just makes them go in the right direction, and it's a good double check to make sure bridges can handle it. So I'd recommend approval.
Are there any questions for Darren? It's good to get this stuff done ahead of time so everybody knows rather than have to deal with it when the emergency comes. So I appreciate all of the time. Supervisor Faisal, any questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion for approval of the agreement with Iowa DOT for incident management temporary detour routes.
Moved.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Faisal?
Aye.
Hens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Okay, it is approved. Get there, and they're heading. Sorry. Need to do that. Okay, Darren, you have another issue? Discussion or speed limit request on 680th Avenue?
Yes. I've got some PowerPoint slides here to show you. What we have is a request for a speed limit. I would say normally in this situation, I would bring a resolution for a speed limit to the board for action. I'm not recommending a speed limit on this, so I did not put a resolution on the board, so this is just for discussion purposes. Now I can bring something back at a later date, if that's the direction the board wants to give me, but the request is on 680th, a gravel road. We have Lincoln highways up here and Highway 30s down here. It's kind of a cut-through Hickory Grove Lakes down here. This is a picture of our sign inventories. You can see it. We have a lot of signs for gravel road out there already because of the number of curves we have. On gravel roads, speed limits are set by the Iowa code. It's 55 miles per hour during the day and 50 miles per hour at night. So we don't set speed limits on our gravel roads. The only exceptions to those is around some cities. We have shared roads on city limit lines that the city sets speed limits, so we match those, but in general, we don't set speed limits for the rest of our county roads. What we do do is put these yellow warning signs, which are much more effective with the curve coming up. There's a speed plate here of, this curve is signed 15 miles per hour, as well as this one over here. The request is coming in the middle of a mile here from this homeowner, traffic that passes through here. What they did is they put a speed limit sign of their own at 20 mile an hour speed. I'll show you a picture of that. That's a regulatory sign. That has to be approved by the boards. We can't just have the public putting those types of signs out there without board approval, so that, that sign needs to come down. The intention was to have the landowner here. I thought they would be here, but they informed me they could not make it, because this does need to be resolved. We need to get that sign down, and they had indicated if we took it down, they'd just put it back up. So this does need to get resolved.
Darren, what's kind of rated that the curb rate ahead of their homes?
Here?
Yeah.
That's a bridge, so it's got all kinds of posting signs and object marker signs, so that's what that is.
And where does the homeowner live exactly?
Right here.
There, and this sign there is?
This is a one-lane bridge sign. These curves through here are signed right here. It's actually this sign here that has a bunch of curves on it that's underneath the speed limit. So we got one here and one here. This one's fairly close to the house. This one is quite a ways back because the curves start further back, so my recommendation is going to be to add one more of these yellow curb signs somewhere in this neighborhood going up the hill, similar situation to where they put their speed limit sign, but it won't be an enforceable speed limit. These are just speed recommendations, but.
What would the recommendation be on that?
It's current, both of these are 20 miles per hour for these curves that are through here now. The outside ones are much sharper, so those are at 15 speed advisory plates, so it'll probably be a 20. You drive this, the next couple photos I'll show you, it kind of drops off quick here, too. It's hard to even drive through here at over 25 miles an hour and keep it on the road, so you've got to slow down going through here. Go to the next slide, could please? This is looking east. This is the homeowner here. So this is the curve, and it drops off pretty quick, and a bridge is at the bottom of the hill. I should probably go back a little bit just so you're aware. We had an issue out here this early spring. You can see there's no ditch here. It's a little hard to tell, but it's built up here, and our mortarator was plowing snow, and we get snow covering this. You can't tell where the ground is, so he hit the ground when he was plowing the snow with his wing, so they were kind of upset about that, so we met with them looking for solutions. They want us to move the road out. There's a few issues with that. One, the further we move this curve out, if we did, that would make it sharper and actually be worse for traffic speeds going through there, make that curve sharper. And two, if, we have some attorneys in the crowd right now, they would vouch for this. If, as soon as you start changing this road, you technically need to bring it up to current design standards, and that would be very difficult to this stretch, so it's best just to leave this how it is and sign it. Those are a couple of reasons why we don't want to do that, but if you go to the next slide, it shows you going up the hill. See, it's fairly steep coming up the hill to their house. This is looking back west, and this is about where they put their speed limit sign. If we move that curve even further out, it would make it even worse traveling through there. Okay, next slide, please. There's a picture of the speed limit sign. It's an actual correct size and regulatory sign, so people would think it's real. The sheriff would assume it was real if they saw it out there, so unfortunately, it comes an issue if it's not approved by the board, but I was traveling down the road. We did have an accident here in July down at the bridge. Intoxicated person hit the bridge and took all the handrail out. That's why I was traveling down this road to check out our repair. I noticed the sign, so I stuck my phone out to take a picture of it to talk to my superintendent if he was aware of it. I didn't even realize when I took the picture, landlords are both standing back here. I greeted them all, so they were already there when I took the picture. I didn't even notice it, because I just stuck my camera. And then they came down and talked to me about it, and I guess you'd say they're very passionate about having these speed limit sign there, and so I called the sheriff out to assist, because it's gonna have to be resolved at some point, because a sign can't stay there without board approval. Last slide, just giving, I mentioned there was one accident. It's kind of hard to see, but here's the road through here. It's pretty great. There was one accident here in July. That's where the bridge is. There was one accident over here six years ago. This is a 10-year history of accidents. That was unrelated to the curves or anything. It actually says ran stop sign, and that was another intoxicated person. I believe this is kind of a cut across from Hickory Grove Lake area. Late at night, you did get some intoxicated people driving through this area, so that, that is a concern, but, so really, there's only been one accident in the past 10 years on that whole stretch. But like I said, my recommendation is, it's much more effective to sign the curves with speed plates rather than put a speed limit on both ends and just expect everybody to drive a speed limit through the whole area. So as far as safety's concerned, it's better just to sign the individual with this yellow warning signs rather than a speed limit, so that's gonna be my recommendation. Latifah, I gave you a heads up that she informed me she could not make the meeting, so she may contact you directly to discuss this. I forward you that information, so I will inform her of what my intentions were in adding that new curve, and I guess we can see how that goes, but, so at this point, it's just for discussion, and we may be back if they want to come to the board and discuss it more.
Darren, I ask what the first curve we got showing that it's a curved road, do you see you have speed limit there as well?
A speed advisory plate. It's yellow, so it's not enforceable. That's the other issue I didn't bring up. That's another concern. If we do post an enforceable speed, this landowner admitted he does chase people down, and I don't know what he does at that point. He tells them they're speeding and tells them not to speed through there, and sheriff told me can't do that, and he said he would continue to do that. So if we do put up an enforceable speed, I think, one, the sheriff's gonna get a lot of calls to come out and enforce it, or he's gonna continue to chase him down and tell him to break him laws. That, that's a concern for me as well if we do put up an enforceable speed limit.
So, so I guess it's unfair. So again, the speed advisory.
Yeah.
Do you actually say 20 miles?
Yeah.
Advised or whatever?
It's got, the curve on the top and the bottom's got a speed advisory plate of, it just says like 15 miles per hour.
Okay, okay.
Because it's a yellow sign, people are supposed to know it's advisory and not, you know.
So are you saying you would look at during these speed advisory signs where he's at that?
Closer to his home. That's his concern, what the traffic's doing right there, getting him to slow down, so it would not be enforceable. The other.
But would address that one stretch of people being able to see that again?
Yeah, since that one on the west, the B D side is so far back because the curves start sooner.
Sure, sure.
It would give them a second reminder.
Supervisor Faisal, is there anything that you want to add to the discussions, since you did talk to one of the owners?
I have not talked to the owners. They have not called me.
Okay.
No one has contacted me, but no, I, I have, I have other concerns about an advisory versus a speed limit. I think that sounds like a great idea, Darren.
Sounds like it's worth a try.
Yeah.
You need that.
Well, we'll give that a shot, and we are going to have to take that speed limit sign down, and I can tell you right now, that's probably gonna be an issue, so I don't know what's gonna happen with that, but we do need to get it down until the board does actually pass a speed limit there, if that's what we end up with.
So this is not a, this is just a discussion item, so we've got our direction.
Yep.
Supervisor Faisal?
I was just wondering how long it would take to get the advisory sign up?
We should have those in stock, so if we do, it could be within a week. If not, there are shortages of everything, so it could be a while.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering how long it would be if, if this, if there's, if we took their speed limit sign down immediately, what the time lapse would be between getting that advisory sign up?
Pretty good chance we have it in stock. If not, I'll let you guys know.
Thank you.
Then the other, I just got thinking, we're probably gonna have to give the speed limit sign back to the property owner, which is a little concerning, because he said he'd put it back up, so if we give it to him, that'll make it a lot easier, but it is his property, so we'll have to give it back to him, but if he puts it back up, we'll just have to address it.
Right.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Darren. Okay, we're now to upcoming agenda items for our next meetings. I don't have any. Supervisor Faisal?
No, thank you.
Then we'll go on to public comment number two. This is a time reserved for comments for the public on items that are not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of the opening meeting slot, but may do so in the future. If there's anybody who has a public comment for an item that was not on today's agenda, please either come to the front of the table here or unmute yourself and raise your hand. Seeing, anybody? Seeing none, I will close public comment. We're going to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Faisal, would you like to start? Do you have anything you'd like to discuss here, report on?
Um, no, not, not right now. My, my week's kind of up in the air. I'm supposed to be presenting on Thursday with members of Scan about a new initiative, a Strive Together initiative, created a career program. So fingers crossed I'll be doing that, and then I'll be able to fill you guys then on, on that after.
Could not. Can do it. Supervisor Hens, what do you have?
Sure. Got my ARPA workup session this afternoon. I have a personal appointment meeting with Amelia, and then also a volunteer focus group. It's over Zoom for the lunch hour. That, Thursday, I have an agent resources webinar, and then I have the space study on my calendar. Starting to Labor Day again. I do also want to add that the three of us were at the ISAC conference last week. Had brought it, it was a good conference, had some information that was provided that I felt was pertinent to what we're dealing with right now, which was nice, and that all three of us completed the certified supervisor. Strong red as well, so that was a two-year process, and that was great, too.
I really want to. I really wanted to thank ISAC and Cullen up for just doing a wonderful job of saying we need something to really, you know, formalize and add to the training that we're getting as supervisors and I really enjoyed all the training the last couple of years and we were part of the first graduating class. So three out of sixty-seven of the first graduating class were the three of us, so that was great. So, okay, what do I have coming up? We have the ARPA work session this afternoon. Tomorrow morning, the, uh, Headwaters and South Skunk WMA is meeting and we're planning an open house that we're gonna have for landowners primarily in Story and Hamilton County. We're gonna have, I think it's November eighth, but I'll get the date to you, but we're gonna have a meeting in, uh, Story City and then we're gonna have a meeting in Jewels, so we'll have a story, Northern Story County and Southern Hamilton County, so I'm really excited about that. We've got a lot of partners who are gonna present with us and, uh, talk a lot about the HBL practices and what our studies telling us. Then tomorrow afternoon, I'm, uh, on a webinar about zoning, Better Cities Coalition or something like that has been sending emails and they're, they're talking about how to use, um, municipal zoning to help further affordable housing and help increase density of housing, something I'm really, I'm interested in both of those issues, so I'm gonna try to do that webinar tomorrow. Thursday afternoon, we have our space needs study work session for the county space needs. Uh, Friday morning, our pipeline, um, working group is going to meet and, um, go over all the information that we got, uh, last week at the Iowa State Association of Counties about drainage districts, possible ordinances, and petitions to intervene, there was a lot of information there. So we're gonna kind of go through all of that and see what makes sense for Story County to be looking at and hopefully not, probably not next week, but sometime in the next few weeks, some of these materials will be coming to the board of supervisors. And it looks like I'll be off Friday afternoon and, uh, Labor Day weekend, so everybody have a safe and happy, um, last summer fling, Labor Day weekend and, uh, think, think about the meeting for Labor Day as well. So that's all I have. The next thing I see on our agenda is a closed session pursuant to Iowa clause section twenty-one point five, sub one, sub C. So I would entertain a motion for the board to go into closed session. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to go into session, Evans?
Aye.
Basil, aye. Merkin, aye.
Aye.
I did it again, I just can't wait, can I? Basil, aye.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We are going to go into closed session now. Okay, we are returning to open session now and I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of the settlement in the, uh, Creeger versus Blue River Organic Seeds LLC and the Seth Cal, uh, Kowalek versus Boone County, Iowa and Story County, Iowa as discussed in closed session.
Second. Is there further discussion? If not, Evans?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Motion carries. I would entertain motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second, clear adjourn.